Good evening. Today is Wednesday, December 3rd, 2025, and I'm calling to order the work session of the Oregon City City Commission. I would like to roll call, please.
Commissioner Scott Wilson, here.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell, here.
Commissioner Rocky Smith, here.
Commissioner Adam Marl, here.
And Mayor Denise McGriff.
Present. So we have one item of business on our agenda tonight. It is to review the John Storm Dock structural assessment. Take it away, gentlemen.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Scott Archer, Park and Recreation Director, and?
Tom Kissinger, Parks and Recreation Deputy Director.
So a while back, at this point, the Commission had, um, thank you, uh, the Commission had asked for, uh, for us to do some analysis of the dock at John Storm Park, uh, to explore the possibility of expand, of expanding the, the size of, of vessels that can dock there, uh, the potential for some expanded commercial activity, based on, you know, kind of what the current restrictions are. So we, uh, we consulted or we, uh, contracted with KPFF Consulting. Uh, it's an engineering firm. Uh, they did a structural analysis of the dock, um, as kind of related to this, uh, to the questions of the Commission. Um, their, their analysis included doing in water. So they, they did some diving and did in-water assessment as well as above the water. And so, uh, what we're going to do is just walk you through a presentation that basically summarizes the findings from their report and, um, kind of lays out what some of the potential options and considerations might look like. Uh, one of the things that I want to, um, make sure I point out, and we will probably discuss this a little bit more with you, but is the, the possible, um, ramifications of any decisions to change the usage of the dock with, uh, with regard to our, um, funding and our partnership with Oregon State Marine Board. Uh, they invested, um, a significant amount of funding to build the dock. And so there might be some, some ramifications or some considerations of, of money that might be owed back for, for that or reimbursement. And then future funding as well. We, um, if, if any, any decisions to, to change the usage could impact the, um, the ongoing maintenance funding that's available for us, uh, as well as future capital projects or improvements. So just something to, to think about as we're having those conversations that there could be considerations. And it really depends on, which, which direction we do or don't go. Uh, we've had some preliminary discussion with the Marine Board about that to try to get an idea of what, what we'd be looking at. And really, I, I think their answer was kind of come back and talk to us when you kind of know which direction you're going for sure. So we can kind of get a little bit better information. So it, it, we really don't have, uh, details other than it, it likely has some impact. So. Uh, but with that, what I'd like to do is, is, um, have Tom walk through our presentation and then of course we'll be happy to answer questions and help you with your conversation.
May I ask you just a quick question before you start? So since other than the two of us, they don't have any real background. Are you going back to the point of beginning on how the John Storm Dock got there in the first place?
Um, we can, we can address that. That wasn't necessarily a big component of our presentation, but we can certainly talk to.
Cause it would, it would help for them to have an understanding of how we got there in the first place.
Okay.
And the, you know, the arrangements we had with the Marine Board, why it was built the way it is, et cetera, et cetera. Just, just again, asking because like I said, Ian and I are probably the only ones that have some knowledge about it.
Sure. We can, we can address some of that. We, again, it wasn't part of our presentation, but happy to, happy to help, help with some of that history as well.
Awesome. Do you have the clicker?
I do.
You got the clicker? All right.
We'll jump in first to just kind of go over what the project is. We'll do an overview of, of what we assessed, why we assessed this, uh, and kind of set some assumptions for, for how these assessments were conducted. Um, so the original request was to examine the structural capacity of and potential upgrades necessary for the dock to handle commercial vessels larger than 60 feet long, 40 tons. That's the original design vessel that it was designed for. Uh, if you kind of envision the dock, if you've been there, you can see, uh, there's a yellow section that's painted out as you're coming down the gangway and kind of making that corner, um, you'll see this section that's painted out. That is the section that is available for commercial usage. Um, so 60 foot long, 40 ton, that is the original design vessel. What did we evaluate? We looked at the current condition of John Storm Dock. Uh, is its capacity to support that original design vessel still there? And then we looked at a couple of different scenarios for larger boats during the last discussion with City Commission. There was some discussion of whether we were talking about a 90-foot boat, a 150-foot boat. Um, one of the things that we've learned through our conversations with Marine Board is we really can't use kind of theoretical vessels. We really should be using a vessel that exists as, as a potential vessel so that they can really look at how it, how it moors, how it, uh, you know, docks, how it, uh, handles wind, windshear, all that kind of thing. Uh, so what we looked at were two vessels. Uh, the first is the Portland Spirit. You're probably familiar with that. It's the largest boat in the Portland Spirit fleet. It's 150 feet long and 360 tons. So a much bigger boat than the dock was originally designed for. We looked at two scenarios with that. One is a, uh, what we call stop and go operation. So that's where it just, it stops, it drops people off and it leaves. Uh, it's a, it's a quick action, typically less than 30 minutes. Um, they're typically under power while they're doing this. So they're, you know, running their engines so that they're not really fighting, you know, they're kind of fighting the river current. They're not tying off and leaving the boat there in a completely off position. And then we looked at a prolonged stay scenario. So what would it take to support a boat of that size to stay overnight or over the weekend? Uh, and then to kind of balance that out, knowing that that is a much larger boat than what we support today, we looked for a medium-sized vessel, which ended up being the Crystal Dolphin. It's also ironically owned by the Portland Spirit Company. It's one of the boats in their fleet. Um, this boat is kind of a medium-sized vessel. It's 84 feet and 91 tons. So that kind of hits those, those two vessels that we had discussed previously. 150 feet and 90 feet. So.
Tom, before we go into the details of the report, maybe we want to address what, um, Mayor, what you were asking about a little bit ago is, is kind of going back to the history and, for those, um, that may know, um, uh, I certainly welcome additional information. So going, going back to when this, um, idea was envisioned, uh, quite a long time ago, the, the original idea was it was being explored to put a dock in closer to the downtown area. And I suppose that's what you're getting at, Mayor. Um, in my recollection, so the, um, in my, my first time around with Oregon City, um, John Storm Park was built, uh, when I, shortly after I first started in, in 2004. But I was not here for the planning phase, but I do have some, some recollection of, of what had happened. But it was, um, it was originally envisioned, uh, to, to come off of kind of the downtown area where, um, the underpass is for pedestrians on, on 99E on the viaduct. Um, so I believe that's like 8th Street area.
Yeah.
And, um, the part that I don't recall is why that was, was moved away from there. But there, there were some, there were some, I think there were some river conditions and some issues with putting a structure on the river right there. Uh, so, uh, you know, initially the idea was, um, build a dock where, um, people can come and, and more, or, you know, park their boat for, uh, a while, or potentially have some commercial vessels come in and people can quickly and easily access the, the downtown area. And so eventually that, that planning process led it away from that site. Um, and the, the place that it is now is kind of where it ended up being, I guess, the best, um, the best scenario. So what ended up happening, of course, was it moved it away from, you know, further away from the downtown core, not as easily accessible it was going, as it was going to be. Um, though it's, you know, it's not terribly far away, but definitely a little bit more of a challenge to get, you know, on by, as a pedestrian to get in and out of, of the dock and into the downtown core. So I know that's part of the consideration of, um, the commercial use and, you know, potentially future considerations there. Is that, Mayor, what you're kind of getting at? Is that, that history? Happy to help.
Yeah.
Fill another.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What we built it for and, you know, why it was at the, at that location.
Yeah. And one, one other piece I'll add to this, and it's kind of part of the whole context of this conversation is, um, with regard to the Marine Board's investment. So they invested, uh, you know, I would say the majority of the money for that, um, for the dock and also for some of the supporting facilities like restroom and, and, you know, things that serve the access to the dock. The city put in its own funds as well, but I, I recall that the, the Marine Board, I think, was the primary or the major funder. The reason that there is a limitation on the, uh, commercial use, the size of vessel or the size, the amount of dock space that can be used for commercial activity, the Marine Board limits that, uh, because the primary funding that they receive comes from recreational boaters or, you know, fishing vessels with, you know, the smaller vessels, not the, not the big commercial-sized vessels. So, so their primary mission is to, is to provide river access or water, waterway access in Oregon, um, for their, um, for the users that fund their programs, which is, which is smaller vessels and not typically non-commercial vessel, vessels. So that's what, that's where the, the Marine Board's, um, funding component comes into this conversation and, and why they restrict or limit the amount of commercial activity. And when you go beyond that, it's sort of, it's sort of, um, violates the, their, their primary goal of what they provide funding for. So that's kind of part of that conversation.
All right. Moving on to kind of the current facility conditions. So, uh, as Scott mentioned, we had the dock inspected, both a visual inspection on land and also an, a dive inspection that actually went under, looked at the components, uh, in the water. The dive inspection occurred on July 22nd, 2025. Uh, the overall condition, there's minor damage and some deterioration, but overall the dock is in, uh, actually pretty good shape for the age. Um, some key findings, the piles indicated some minor rust and pitting, some reduced thickness, uh, is calculated from that. So, you know, the piles are the big, um, structures that hold the dock together. Um, but overall in pretty good condition. The concrete floats, good condition. The timber whalers, which you can see, uh, these are the photos that are shown here. Those are the timber whalers. Um, some of them are missing the through rods. That's what's shown in the photo here. There's also some damage to the bull rails, um, which people can tie off to. Um, that's a kind of a continuing thing that our team is maintaining. Those are the things that we're really set up to, to handle. Um, you know, we replace those on a regular basis. Uh, the through rods are, are kind of a, a larger project that would probably require a specialized contractor to come in and do. So, uh, we did learn some good information from this dive inspection. Uh, we're working on getting some of these repairs done now. So then going on to kind of the original design vessel and its current capacity assessment. Since there's only minor deterioration to the condition of the dock, the facility can certainly support its original divine, design vessel of the 60-foot, 40-ton, uh, vessel. These recommended repairs, replace the missing through rods, repair and replace any damaged whalers, fix the damaged bull rails. As I mentioned, we've actually already taken care of some of the ones that were identified in this report, but it is something that we repair on a regular basis. Uh, the estimated cost for that is about $20,000. So that's well within our ability to maintain and take care of. So now we're moving into kind of new scenarios for the dock. Uh, so we've got a picture of the Portland Spirit there, just so you can kind of see, uh, the size of this vessel. Analysis for short-term mooring, uh, the specifications for this, it's 150 feet long, 360 tons. It's a, it's a very large boat. Um, the wind assumption is 50 knots at its maximum. The current piles would not be able to absorb the energy from that boat hitting the dock, uh, especially at low water conditions in the summer when it's dry. When the water's higher, they're less exposed, they can probably withstand it. But at lower level of water conditions, when you probably want to be having tours, it'd be, it probably cannot do it. So there are some required upgrades that would allow the dock to take a boat of that size. They are, uh, some sea guard fenders, um, some 10-ton cleat bollards to allow them to tie off and then replacing timber with steel whalers on both sides. The estimated cost for this option would be $470,000. Um, so this is in that stop and go operation capacity too. This is where the, the boat is stopping, it's dropping people off or picking people up and then leaving. It's not staying for an extended period of time. This is just a, uh, drawing of what that would look like. It's just conceptual at this point. Uh, this kind of shows what those upgrades would look like. The large boat, I'm going to use the laser pointer hopefully. Um, the large boat that's on the outside. So that's the, that's kind of the, uh, the other one. The, yeah, the biggest boat. So that's the river side. That would be the river side of the dock. The two smaller boats are on the shore side of the dock. So that's kind of that space, the dock between the shore. Um, so this shows the original design vessel. That's the smallest boat that you see on the screen. And then it shows a, a bit of a larger boat and then the largest boat would be the, the size of the Portland Spirit. This shows where those recommended upgrades would go, uh, and just gives kind of an idea of what that would look like. So basically it's just adding fenders to absorb some of that energy, adding some more reinforced cleats to be able to tie off the ropes, uh, and then reinforcing the actual whalers, changing them from timber to steel. So moving on to the next option, the prolonged stay option is where you start to see some more increased costs. Um, that really comes from, you know, it, weather's unpredictable. So when we're doing an analysis like this, the engineers are looking at storm events. So the design wind speed increases substantially from 50 knots to 72 knots. Uh, it doubles the mooring load on the facility. So this has, um, some, some substantial additional upgrades required, uh, which include internal guide piles with float placements or external guide piles and then potentially, um, two upland pile-supported bollards. So KPFF gave us two different options. Um, the most expensive option would be the internal pile option. And when I show you the, the design for that, I'll kind of explain what that means. Um, this is the option that's more expensive, but would preserve the most recreational use, um, cause it's not really changing the structure of the dock. The, the more cost-effective option, the $770,000 option, it starts to reduce our recreational usage because those external piles would be installed on the shore side of the dock. So it would reduce the space where you would be able to dock a boat. So we can look at that together. This is the first option here and you can see what they're, what they're proposing in this would be to install two piles on the upland shore side. So they would actually tie off on the land and that would help reduce the amount of energy that is absorbed by the dock. And then, um, some spring lines to cleats that would go in on these new steel whalers. So they would be reinforced, um, to be able to take that. The next option is the alternative option. This is the cheaper option. Still has those upland piles that are installed on the shore itself that they would tie off on. Uh, but it does have the external guide piles. You'll see those tiny little red dots on the inside. Um, those are the external piles. So each one of those would be kind of a, an obstruction that a boat would have to move around. So this, this option would reduce our recreational capacity on the inside. So then as we move into the, uh, kind of the Crystal Dolphin option, and, and I should point out too, we're, we're using boat names here. This isn't necessarily like this is the boat that's going to come here. These are just boats that are potential boats. Think of them as large boat, medium-sized boat, and the current vessel is a small boat.
They, they are the boats that are owned by American Waterways, which is the parent company.
Correct. Yep. Yep. So, uh, just kind of a reference point for this vessel, the analysis for the short-term mooring for the, the Crystal Dolphin. The vessel specs are, uh, 80 feet, 84 feet long, 91 tons. We use the same wind assumptions. Uh, actually in this scenario, the current facility is adequate to take a boat of this size. Uh, for stop and go operations, we could accept a larger boat at John Storm, but this is about the size that we could accept without significant upgrades. Uh, if we did want to move to more of a prolonged stay operation for a boat of this size, we'd be looking at similar upgrades to the stop and go option for the Portland Spirit. So the, the longer it stays there, you're increasing your wind load, you need more upgrades. So just to give you kind of an overview of the cost, repairs only, the 40-ton original design vessel, that was estimated about $20,000. As I mentioned, we're already working on taking care of that. Um, I will point out it's not included in this report because it was done separately. Um, there is some damage to the debris boom itself that protects the dock. Um, we did have that dive inspected. We have a separate report for that that we can share if you're interested. Um, the cost repairs on that are about $70,000. Um, so that we do not currently have funding for and would probably need to seek a grant funding to pay for. Um, and then we go down kind of as we increase in size and complexity, the cost obviously increases. Portland Spirit, the stop and go scenario, 470,000, and then the two alternative, uh, options for prolonged stay. So just again, kind of reiterating what I just said, there's three levels of improvement that we're looking at here. Just the basic repairs that maintains our current capacity and potentially the capacity for a larger boat in a stop and go scenario. We could look at some stop and go upgrades to do an even bigger boat, or we could look at storm more, storm mooring improvements. And as we get into kind of key decision points and, and what we really want to, you know, kind of discuss tonight is the four main questions. What is the intended use of the dock? Our current agreements with the Oregon State Marine Board and the Department of State Lands are for the original design vessel. They would probably need to be modified. Um, as Scott mentioned, adding more commercial capacity here may have financial implications as well that we'll talk a little bit more about. What is the expected vessel type and frequency of use? Uh, if we proceed, which vessel scenario seems more likely? Are, are we talking about a boat as large as the Portland Spirit or are we looking at more of a medium-sized boat? To date, no vessels have approached staff asking for additional capacity, but I do know there is a group that is, uh, you know, discussing this and, and working with some of the vessels in the area. A short-term mooring versus prolonged stays. So if we proceed with any option, which seems more likely? Is this, is this like people are dropping, a boat is dropping people off to go explore downtown and then leaving? Or is it staying for the weekend? Um, which would be more preferable? Day trips versus overnight stays? And then budget allocation and project timeline. To date, uh, we don't have any funds currently allocated for these upgrades. If we were to proceed, we'd need to figure out where to pay it, pay it from. Um, and grants will likely not cover upgrades for commercial activities. So that's one thing to keep in mind. And then I, I did want to point out, I actually, I, I chose this photo very specifically because these are all the different boats that are in the, the fleet. Uh, for the, so the largest one is the Portland Spirit. The one that's in the middle is the Crystal Dolphin. Then it's the Willamette Star. And the smallest one you see there is the Explorer jet boat. The Explorer jet boat actually has used John Storm Dock and does frequently. Um, I, it comes at least once a year for the Lamprey Festival and they may do other tours. Um, so just kind of for size comparison, that's the, that's the type of boat that we're seeing commercial usage for today. Are those other three vessels what we would want to seek in the future? So, uh, after we decide on kind of facility use scenarios, if we decide that adding more commercial capacity is appropriate, we'll reach out to Marine Board to determine the financial implications of the desired scenario and return you at a later date with more information. And we will move forward with repairs to the existing dock regardless of the decision. So with that, I think we'll just kind of open it up to discussion.
Thoughts? I will say that just for, you know, the newer folks, this was a request, as you said, from 2024, former Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Yep.
Brought this to the forefront. Um, I would make a, an, a point that I hadn't thought about before. So earlier today I was in a meeting with, um, one of the partners of American Waterways and we were talking about, you know, if and when the locks reopen.
Yep.
He made a point of saying that even if the locks were open today, the problem will be getting a boat up the river because of the shallow draft. The channel hasn't been dealt with for many, many years and they doubt they, that anything could get up there other than, you know, recreational use. So he was saying that there are other things that have to happen before anybody is coming up there with a boat. And I thought about that and then I realized, yes, with, you know, since the locks closed, um, the commercial traffic is not there. So there hasn't been really any, I guess I would use the term maintenance on that section of the river that would, um, allow for, um, a, a deeper draft for a boat to come up and they haven't been up since then.
Right.
So I thought, yes, that is a very good point. And so he wanted to know what the locks authority was going to do about that. And that's not within their purview to do anything to the, to the river and the channel. But they said they'd be happy to work with people on that. So that would be, we'd fall into that same category as, as well. So. Yeah, that's what I said.
Do you, do you happen to know, say the, the river were navigable, um, for commercial use? How, what, what size of craft would the locks theoretically support?
Well, I mean, a boat like the Portland Spirit couldn't get up there.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's too narrow.
Okay.
Um, maybe the smallest one that they have, but if you look at some of the pictures of the, um, the barges that have, I mean, they're, they're very narrow. And when they brought the, um, Bruce Groose up, they had, I mean, they had to bring it in many, many pieces because of course it's getting through the, the gates is, is. So it's not going to be a large boat. Now the gentleman that we had here many months ago, who had the, the boat that's moored upriver had to bring it down to dry dock. He was able to get that through. But again, if you've seen that one, it's also very narrow. And it's a, it's a paddle, isn't it a paddle? Is it a paddle?
I think so.
Yeah. It's like, you know, kind of a riverboat type thing.
The one that's up in Salem?
Yes.
I don't, I don't think that's a paddle wheel.
Well, but anyway, it's, it's a very, it's narrow.
Yeah.
Yeah. But it fits through the locks.
Yeah, it was able to get through the locks. So there are some, not that they would be coming through the locks, but I mean, it's still the issue of trying to get from Portland Harbor to here, or if you're upriver, coming down to get to here. Even if the locks was open today, there's only a certain number of vessels that can actually navigate that unless they want to go for the joyride over the, you know, but I don't think people want to do that. So there are capacity issues that are beyond our control. Go right ahead. Just speak up.
I do sit down on some of the meetings of the River Assets Group, but Jerry Herman and Kent Ziegler are heading up. And the discussions there, I think the Portland Spirit is out of the question for a lot of different reasons. It's definitely too shallow to get into the dock. They're also concerned of vessel of that size navigating with all the fishermen that are in the river. So, you know, I think we can, I think we can scratch that.
Well, there's the paddlers and the hog lines. Mr. Corwin mentioned all those things. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up.
But when you, I think when you start talking about that 90 or 100-ton size, and the boats that I'm thinking about, Crystal Dolphin is one. The sternwheeler that's sitting across, that is docked across in Westland is a 100-ton vessel and is interested in being able to use it and use John Storm. The other one, and we talked about it not that long ago, is the Frog Ferry. And I don't know what the weight, they don't have a boat, but their website says that they're looking at a vessel that would be 70 to 100 passengers. Crystal Dolphin is 120 passengers, so I'm kind of guessing that might be in that same 100-ton ring. So if ultimately, maybe not right away, but if ultimately we could get to where, and I'm, so let me ask you a question first. So, Crystal Dolphin size, 100-ton, stop-and-go only requires the $20,000 repairs?
Yes.
Oh, you said it was more.
Yeah. For stop-and-go, it can support a vessel of that size.
Okay.
That was one of the positives that we saw from this report.
Well, to me, that would, that would be a great start. And then we see if the interest is there. Between those, between that sternwheeler across the river and Crystal Dolphin sized and potentially Frog Ferry, they recently got permission to use two different docks in the city of Portland. So, you know, now they're looking for the other end of that. And if it could be Oregon City, especially with, you know, who knows what's going to happen, or not what, but when at Tom Wada Village. I mean, there's just tons of potential.
Did you say the Frog Ferry does not have a boat? Or they do have a boat?
They do not. They have a, they have a preferred design, but I don't think they've ordered any boats.
Because I know that they did some demonstrations when I was still working in Portland, and we, a bunch of us went as staff because they asked us to take it across. So we went from the dock at East Bank Esplanade and then across to the other one. But it was a small, little, maybe five people could be on it.
My understanding was that they didn't, they couldn't make much progress until they had permission from the city of Portland to use.
A dock.
Dock. So now they have that, so now they can try to fundraise and get something going. I had one more point I wanted to make. What the heck was it? Uh, stop and go. Well, I'll let somebody else go, and I'll think of what I was going to say.
One more thing. So the one, is the one you're talking about in Westland, the one they're trying to fundraise for to save? Is that the one?
I think so. It's right down below, what's that historic house in Westland?
The McLean?
Yeah. It's just, it's right below, I mean, you can standard John Storm and look across and see it.
Because I know the Willamette Falls, whatever they're called now, there was, Willamette Falls Heritage Foundation was promoting that they got this little boat that they wanted to save, and it could be doing blah, 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 blah. So it, yeah, maybe it's the same one. Right ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad that you brought up the Frog Ferry because I actually had the website pulled up in preparation for this where it talks about the 70-passenger vessel. Because that was going to be one of my questions was whether, what level of repair would bring us to qualify for stops from that. So thank you for bringing that up. So the first thing is, do you recall what the cost was for this assessment? Because I do recall when Commissioner O'Donnell brought this to us and we decided that we wanted to do this, but do you know what the cost was for this assessment?
I think total it ended up being somewhere around $35,000 to do the assessment.
Okay. And then because that wasn't a budgeted item, was that just taken from?
It was from the, from just the Parks Fund.
Operating, okay. And then I'm remembering also from that time when it was brought to us, a privately-funded assessment, and I remember there were some issues that the Marine Board had with those conclusions. And I was hoping you could refresh my mind on why that wasn't sufficient for them.
Yeah, some of the reasons specifically were the vessel that was analyzed in that report was a theoretical vessel, and it didn't exist. So one of the things they specifically asked us was to use a real vessel. That's why we used these real vessels. So we took a lot of the feedback that we had from the Marine Board and put that, gave that to the consultant, told them this is what we're looking for. They actually ended up incorporating that report. That report is a, it's a geotechnical analysis of, you know, kind of the structures of the piles and how they're, you know, in the ground. So they were actually able to incorporate that work. That work did benefit us. It ended up saving us cost in the end. So they were able to incorporate that into the work. But we were able to take the feedback from Marine Board about that report and address it here.
The Dye family paid for that?
Right.
Yes.
It was fundraised, but there were some questions about, like you said, he said it wasn't a real boat, and that, you know, what were the qualifications of those folks who were doing it? And the Marine Board basically had whole, they brought it back, the staff brought it back to us, was a whole list of, didn't do this, didn't do this, didn't, you know.
Yep.
So that's why we went ahead and said we would do one because we wanted to get.
Yes, I was just trying to remember what the reasons were for that. I agree with Commissioner Mitchell about the starting point with the medium-sized vessel. Would that trigger, if we were to go to that level, would that trigger the financial implications with the Marine Board?
Potentially. So it would require us to expand our commercial usage. Right now, we have 60 feet allocated. We have a license with DSL for 60 feet of commercial usage, and then that was part of like the original grant agreements to build the dock. So we would have to propose that scenario to the Marine Board to expand that use from 60 to 90 feet. That's about the estimate I would use. The Crystal Dolphin's 84 feet, let's go 90 just to be safe. And then they would have to actually take that to U.S. Fish and Wildlife, who's their granting agency, and say, this is the proposal from Oregon City, and ultimately Fish and Wildlife is who makes the determination on whether that results in full repayment, partial repayment, or no action. But Marine Board doesn't want to go, they want to go with a scenario. They want to go with some, like an actual proposal. So that, that's kind of what we're asking tonight. This would give us the ability to do.
And that would just be, again, to clarify, the $20,000 for the repairs that you said were already happening anyway?
Yep.
Okay.
Already happening or will happen?
Will happen. We have, we have funds budgeted in each year for dock maintenance.
Okay.
Yeah. So one thing I do want to point out is, in the past, those repairs have been funded by the Marine Board through a maintenance assistance grant. At this biennium, we do not have that funding. We didn't want to, taking that money has stipulations on commercial activity. We didn't want to bog this down with that. So it's just general fund at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So if I can, or?
Jump in.
So just again, I want to make sure I'm understanding. So if we're only making repairs to the dock, no upgrades?
Yep.
And we allow a commercial vessel larger than 60 feet to utilize the existing structure that could trigger some type of repayment scenario?
That's correct.
Thanks.
Yep.
Go ahead, Rocky.
I don't have anything in addition. I agree with what's already been said, and I think even with the question unanswered about reimbursement, and that should be something we look at.
Well, I think we need to understand what the unintended consequences are because they're always out there. Even if we don't want to hear it, we do need to understand that. There are also financial implications. I think the other thing is, again, brought up at this meeting I was at earlier, not only was there a question about, well, what are the environmental consequences that would happen if the locks was open? Because there were people from the native communities asking about lamprey, salmon, you know, whatever else is coming up, and what would the effect be? So that's why DSL and fisheries would be getting involved because the requirements now are a lot stricter, as I understand, and they're going to be looking very, very carefully about how that, how some additional stress on the river would affect migration. And we can't unfortunately predict what that will say or what that will mean. But yeah, so that's one of the unintended consequences that we don't have any control over, plus the shallow draft, again, we don't have any control of that. And with the way things are going on the opposite side of the United States, we don't know where the core is on all this, which they would have some involvement potentially as well. So, so we can't really make a decision, but we can give, we could come to a consensus on what we would like staff to do or not do.
Well, we need to do the repairs. Especially stuff in the water doesn't get better, it just gets worse quickly. Obviously, I'm not a lawyer, but I'm going to, I think we can push back on the idea of the ODFW concern. We had a 20-year agreement. It ended in 2023. And that agreement clearly says that the dock belongs to the city.
You mean the Marine Board?
Marine Board, yeah.
Not the fisheries. I was thinking, okay.
We were talking about them earlier.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, thank you.
So our agreement with the Marine Board ended in 2023. And it says clearly that it's the city's dock. And it also says that commercial use is allowed now. Okay, so, you know, we paid for 60 feet. We want to use 90. You know, there may be a financial thing, but it's not a change of use because commercial vessels are allowed at that dock, and it's clearly in that agreement that they're allowed. So while we may be wanting to use more of the dock, we are, we are not changing the use of the dock.
And just to that point, you know, we'll, we'll definitely advocate for the city's position and, you know, do whatever we can. And that may include us working with our own city attorney to kind of determine some of those legal issues. So yes, we'll definitely be looking out for the city's best interest. We're just, we just need to come back to them with something a little more concrete. This is, this is the parameter of the discussion, so let's start a real conversation, kind of a scenario.
What about user fees? We don't charge anybody that comes and docks there, right? I mean, you know, if I come up with my kayak and I want to just hang out there, that's recreational use that was intended for. But commercial use, I don't think that we would just say, oh, just come on down. So would there be, would we be looking at, I'm not saying we would, but I'm just saying, is there a possibility that we could do some cost recovery?
Yeah. That's actually a good question. It's something I've been thinking about in this discussion is, you know, today, today we do not charge a fee, and we don't police it, you know? Our crew is down there to check on maintenance. They're looking for people who stay beyond the 72-hour wait period, but they're not, you know, checking that this commercial vessel has paid their annual permit or has, you know, a mooring fee, you know? That might be something that we can consider to offset some of these financial implications, but it would also increase staff time to police that and be there.
I do know that there are examples on the Willamette River that I'm aware of, that Marine Board funded facilities where commercial uses are charged by the city or the entity that owns the dock.
That's what I thought.
So that is a possibility for us to explore.
I definitely think we should. Should we, should we give staff some direction to proceed with the, as Mike suggested, the cost that we already were intending to spend overtime to get the dock up to a basic standard, which is the $20,000 number that we were, that was thrown out? Is that, is that okay with everyone? Okay, I think you have consensus on that particular scenario.
And pursue things with the Marine Board?
Well, yeah, that was part of it.
Okay. Yeah.
And we're all, 90 feet feels correct. That's the right scenario to pursue. That kind of middle-ground scenario feels appropriate.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to go to anything any larger than that. To me, that's, that's not what that dock.
Unless the Frog Ferry becomes 91 feet.
Well, we better tell them they can't be 91 feet. Sorry, can't be 91 feet.
Must be exactly 80 feet.
Must be exactly 84 feet.
There you go.
I want to thank staff for this, this presentation. This was very well done, very informative. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. But the other, I just want to make one more clarification, and I think we know the answer, but we're not pursuing anything, at least at this time, we're not pursuing anything that would be more the longer-term mooring, right? It's the stop-and-go.
Stop-and-go.
It's the shorter, kind of come up and dock, people load or unload, what have you, and then go. Right? Great.
Tony, do you remember when we changed, when we changed the name? We added John's name to the, how long ago was that? We dedicated the, to John?
I've always known it as John Storm.
No, it wasn't always John Storm.
I don't remember then, yeah, what it was before. I don't even remember what it was called.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't remember how long ago it was, but we named it in honor of somebody near and dear to our hearts, whose name was John Storm, to recognize. He passed away. Did any of you guys know, you remember that?
Well, my, yes, I do recall the reason, the namesake for the park. My recollection when the park was dedicated is, it was John Storm Park at that point. But I think prior to that, there were some other names being utilized when it was in the conceptualized and the planning phase.
Yeah. I believe that he lost his life, and we, the city, made a conscious effort to memorialize him.
That's my understanding.
I think the employee that.
That's my, that's my recollection.
Yeah.
Tree branch.
Yeah.
That's, that part's correct. I just don't remember what it was before that.
Yeah. Somebody would know, but they're not alive. Okay, thank you so much for the great presentation.
We will proceed, and then we'll report back when we have more information.
I would say this is John Lewis approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We don't have any other business? All right. We'll come back at 7 o'clock. We are adjourned.